September 10th, 2024 Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. The City Clerk could please take the role.
Nichols.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Esslinger.
Here.
Flom.
Here.
Builo.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Mugawar.
Here.
Seven present.
Leading us in the invocation tonight will be Councilmember Nichols and also lead us in the plaid.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. Mayor decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
[inaudible]
Introduction of staff to start out tonight. Mr. Robby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Common Council members. It's my pleasure to once again be here before you to give you another staffing announcement. We have announced a number of internal promotions to you over the past several months, and this is a continuation of filling the vacancies that have been created from those promotions. I'm also excited to say that at this point now our, the department's supervisory management team is back to full staff, so that's a great feeling as well to be it. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce you to the newly promoted Assistant Water Distribution Manager, John Matuli. John started with the city as a water maintenance worker in the Water Distribution Division in March of 2017. John was promoted to a lead maintenance worker in September of 2021. Prior to joining the city, John worked in the private construction and excavation field for 10 years. John enjoys farming, camping, hunting, and anything else outdoors. John has indicated that he's grateful for this opportunity of internal career advancement within Water Distribution and is looking forward to the challenges of this new role. So with that, John, anything you'd like to add?
Just sort of excited to join a really good team we have for our management and just look forward to work with all you guys. So, thanks.
Excellent. Congratulations on the new role.
Thank you.
Me next.
You are.
Cheryl, come on up. I'm delighted to extend a warm welcome to our newest member of the Clerk's office, Cheryl Pianke. Cheryl joins us as the new deputy clerk. She is bringing five years of experience, and she was the town of El Dorado clerk. And she's also bringing a fresh perspective and will be very beneficial to the staff. A little bit about Cheryl is that she is married to Jim Pianke, who works in Water Distribution. She enjoys a good cup of coffee, camping, working out, and spending time with her family and friends. I'm excited to see the impact that Cheryl will bring here. I'm confident that we'll all thrive, and she'll thrive, and help us to reach new heights. Thank you.
It's been great. It's a little bit different. I'm used to a lot smaller of municipalities, so it's, I'm excited, though. I love it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome. Next up, we have citizen statements to council. I do have one person registered to speak. Wayne, if you'd come on up. Welcome. If you can give us your last name as well.
Jorgensen.
Jorgensen, thank you. If, we didn't say it ahead of time, but if you can keep your statements to five minutes, must address items not listed on the agenda and that are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and that the Common Council may address at a future meeting and can't include any endorsements of any candidates or electioneering. Floor is yours, sir.
Well, it won't take me that long.
Sounds good.
I got a letter in the mail about the change the dates on when to pay the water bill. I get my check the first of, every month, and I have to wait then because I have no money in the, my checking account is up to the limit. I've got only a few dollars in my savings account. I had to wait till the first, and I talked to them downstairs, and they said they'd come up and talk to, come today and talk to you to see if I can get compensation to, so I can pay it on the first, or do I have to continue paying late payments all the time?
Just to clarify, the, your payment date has changed?
Yeah, well, the one day.
Or you want it changed?
The last one is due the 26th, and I don't, I won't get no checks till the first of March. And I do, I get a pension every month for the rest of my life, for it's guaranteed.
City manager, between the, with the finance department and the payment schedule, I don't know the in and outs of our billing cycles and things like that. I don't know the, when it's due, when it's considered late. I don't know any of that. Can, is there a member of staff that can connect with Mr. Jorgensen and chat with him about this to help him out?
Yeah, we can absolutely have somebody look at that. Ms. Combs is our finance director, sir, and we have a new person who's in charge of the accounting part of that, the bill-paying part of it. So, we can, we can put you in touch with somebody.
[inaudible].
Oh, that's okay. I'll tell you what, Julie, if you wanted to just go on the hallway with the gentleman. Ms. Combs will help you. She's our finance director, so she can meet you out in the hallway and talk to you about this.
Fine, because I guarantee you to pay that every first month. We're never, I'm up to date right now.
I'm sure you are. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak under statements to council. If there's anyone here again that wants to speak, please step forward now. I don't see anybody. Oh, is it an agenda item or is it just a statement to council?
It would be to have something put on the agenda.
Okay.
For possibly next, the next meeting.
So not on tonight's agenda?
No.
Come, come on up. Give us your name and address and keep it to five minutes and...
I'm Thomas Recker, and I live on 3290 Meadowbrook Road.
I'm sorry, Thomas, could you spell the last name, please?
R-E-C-K-E-R.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know I have a lot more footwork to do about this issue, but it's a capital improvement assessment that our screen is having, and we're having sewer and water put in. And so I would like to know if that could be discussed in depth or be an agenda item that gets discussed during, you know, maybe the next, next meeting or where there's more time to discuss it.
Have you reached out to city staff to discuss the project and the impacts it has on your property?
Well, my wife got ahold of Michael Schra, but, you know, he's, I guess he lost the primary, but she's talked, I think she's talked to some of the council members or at least put in emails describing the situation.
Okay. But have, have you contacted city staff to discuss the project in any way?
City staff?
Yeah, if it's, if it's the city staff, if it's a city construction project.
Okay, yeah, the only contact we've had is with Matthew Net, who's the city engineer.
He's with our engineering office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. It would probably make sense to talk to Justin Girock. He's our city engineer. And Mr. Girock has told me, I don't know if it was you, it was you, Mr. Recker, but somebody else on Meadowbrook. I think one of the council members may have said, hey, can you guys look into this? So there is some discussion with somebody else. Maybe it's somebody else on Meadowbrook, but when you said your address, I looked it up, and it's like, oh, yeah, I know that staff brought it to my attention. Mr. Robby, our public works director, supervises Mr. Girock, and you can talk to Mr., James, you want to just wave your hand? You can just, if you want to talk to Mr., because it would be appropriate to talk to staff, and then we could see what we can do. And the council's already given us some direction in general, not specific to you guys, but just in general, about utility assessments.
Okay, so that issue is better addressed to...
Start with staff, and I think that's the mayor's intent.
Yeah, and typically, those questions should start there, and then if, if not resolved, you know, we're the last line of defense usually.
Yeah. I didn't even think I'd be talking today. I just thought I'd stand and see what it's all about, but I appreciate how I have a direction to start this process.
Mr. Robby is back there, and if you'd like to connect with him, I'm, I'm quite certain he'll, he'll follow through and be back in touch with information.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else registered that would like to speak to us this evening? I see none. We'll go on to consent agenda. I have no one registered to speak under any consent agenda, so I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on consent? I see none. If you'll take the role on consent agenda.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We move on to pending ordinance. We have three pending ordinances this evening for action. Ordinance 24-501, amend section 13-6 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to fireworks, and amend sections 13-20 and create section 13-21 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to penalties for violations of chapter 13 for adult and juvenile offenders, and to specifically amend the forfeiture for violation of ordinances pertaining to the possession and use of fireworks. I have no one registered on this one.
So moved. Second.
Council discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Attorney Lawrence, and I just want to confirm that the proposal that you guys put in here, that already includes the tiered forfeiture, or we need to amend it to create the tiered forfeiture?
Sorry. You would need to amend it to create the tiered.
Okay. So after discussion, I intend to do that, but I want everybody else to have a chance to do it first.
Anybody else want to talk first? I see no one pressing any buttons. The floor is still yours if you want.
Okay. I move to amend the proposed ordinance provided to provide a tiered forfeiture schedule for violations of section six, 13.6, as it's written in here, sorry, relating to the possession or use of fireworks, to provide the $125 forfeiture for the first violation, $225 for the second, and $1,000 for the third and subsequent violations within a three-year period for adult violators, and for $100 for the first violation, $150 second, and $500 third and subsequent in the three-year period for juvenile violators. Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, cool. Can I just keep?
Yep, you can keep going.
All right. I just want to say thank you to staff. This is lower than I originally intended, but you guys did what we asked you to do. You took it and you gave us your professional opinion, so I appreciate that. And I love that the headline on this and the picture in all the local newspapers are going to say you can be fined up to $1,000, and that's what we asked for, so I appreciate
Councilmember Stevenson.
Public service campaign, or public service announcements, I think that was the other big part of this. Just want to make sure that's kept on track, too, that after we approve this, that there's cognizant effort to get, to get the word out there that this fine has increased quite a bit.
Yeah, I think this will be an ongoing thing, especially about next June. It'd probably be a good time. Is that a good idea?
Yeah.
But, yeah, we'll do that.
Sure. Thank you. Councilmember Nichols.
And I would just like to add to what Councilmember Stevenson said. I'd love it if staff would leverage us and our networks as we're doing that. I think probably we have seven very different groups of people that follow our social media accounts, for example, so I would love if we're leveraged for those public service announcements, because we'll just get it out to even more people. Thanks.
Anyone else? City Clerk, if you please take the role on 24-501.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
The amendment, excuse me. On the amendment. My apologies. Thank you for the correction.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Any discussion on the motion as amended? I see none. If you'll take the role on the motion as amended.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next up, ordinance 24-502, approve zone change from institutional district to single-family residential nine district at 929 Winnebago Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered. Take a motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Any discussion? I see none. When ready, if you'll take the role on 24-502.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 24-503, approve zone change from institutional and single-family resident nine district to institutional district with a planned development overlay at 108 West New York Avenue and property located at southeast corner of West Custer Avenue and Kentucky Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. No one registered on this one either.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Esslinger, and then Councilmember Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to vote no on this. I think this is poor planning on this property. We talk about housing. I think this building, this former school in this area should have used, should have been used for that. It would have been worked out very well, and to tear it down for this use, I think, is inappropriate. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson.
I am going to echo a few of Paul's sentiments. I, I would have ideally liked to obviously see Merrill saved in this instance, but a little bit what I take issue with on this one is that I do believe when we went through the process, the school district went through the process of saying they were going to demolish Merrill and talking about what was going to go there, they really left it a little ambiguous. They, they said that this was going to maybe be a green space. This was, it was really important for students to have a place to recreate and play during, during recess. And now, what we're seeing right now is kind of what I think a lot of us anticipated, is that there's going to be an athletic field there. I don't disagree that this has some use for the school, but it's very limited. It's maybe three months in a year, and certainly kids aren't going to be playing out here during recess. You're not throwing shot during recess. You're not running around a track in your free time. What I, I'll get to my, my point. I guess I would, I would like to deny this, but I, on the grounds that I do feel like they should be meeting our landscape ordinance to the T, and I do feel that, again, some of this planning on the school district part wasn't done necessarily the way that should have been done. It probably should have, two years ago, this plan should have come before us, and then we should have talked about a track then. It feels a little bit like we're trying to fit this very large track onto a relatively small space, and there certainly weren't guaranteed to get these exceptions that they're asking for today. So I would deny this and ask that they meet our, our code exactly.
Councilmember Flom.
Just like to echo what Councilmember Stevenson said and Councilmember Esslinger mentioned as well. It's really a shame that this is where, this is where we're at with this particular property. Merrill means a lot to a lot of people. I didn't go to middle school there, but I know that this caused quite a stir, and it just seems like it's another instance of government not listening to people. So I understand that probably can't be apartments now, but I am not thrilled about this. Thank you.
Any other comments? I see none. If you'll take the role on 24-503.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
No.
Esslinger.
No.
Flom.
No.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
No.
Mugawar. That lost three, four.
Moving on, we have next pending, excuse me, new ordinance. Ordinance 24-504, amend section 27A-8 of the Municipal Code pertaining to through-street designation. This is for Scott Avenue. No anticipated action tonight on this one. This will come back for the second reading at the next meeting. Moving on to new resolution. Resolution 24-505, approve issuance of combination Class B liquor license for flights. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Larson.
Go figure, it's me. I think this is great. I'm, I asked a few questions in the interim between last meeting and this that I didn't quite get answers to yet, so I don't want to hold up this part of this forever, because I think we're on the right track with it, but I'm just hopeful that maybe Diane or Mark, you can provide some guidance as to how... I'm, I'm a little frustrated that we can't move this forward any more quickly than we seem to be doing. So it takes a long time to get to where we're at, but this is part of that to a degree. But I was hoping we would know how many, more specifically, how many licenses we had to offer right this second. I'm not sure I still have that answer, but again, I don't want to debate this one for that purpose. Does that make sense?
Well, the answer to your question is two. We have two licenses available.
Correct.
We have three reserved, two that are specific to the...
I got...
District, and then there's one reserve. That's it. That's the answer.
Got it. That, I've sent, you've got my emails on this subject?
I understand the next steps that you've talked about, but...
In the last two weeks, I've sent a few emails with questions about that calculation from the 1997 change to where we're at, because there's a baseline. Again, the minutia in state law is really boring, so I don't want to spend time talking about it now, Diane. This is something we could do before we get to meetings, but if I asked questions two weeks ago and we don't answer them to this point, I have no recourse but to hash it out here, and I don't want to do that because it doesn't apply to flights liquor license. But I do think it's important that we know exactly 1 million percent for sure how many licenses we really truly have to give based on state law, going back an awful long ways, that there is some dispute about before we move forward doing anything. And I don't have the answer now, so that's the hard part for me. Again, I'm, I'd be comfortable if we can move forward with some guarantees that we can talk about this in a timely manner going forward and then leave this part of it alone, because I, I do want to divest the licenses we have. I think it's more than two personally, but that's going to take some discussion between people who understand how this works.
I'll stand that we have two licenses available.
Perfect.
If we want to talk about some other creative ways, that's what I think we talked to the council about, and we can do that. But, you know, we've, we've been looking at this for a number of years. I, I don't know if I brought the city attorney into it, but we took a look at the history and, you know, we went back. So it's, it's two, and I'm certainly willing to look at how we can do more. I didn't think that was relevant for tonight's discussion, and I think these folks, we don't want, I wouldn't recommend holding these folks up.
That is not my intention in any way.
Even if we disagree.
Right.
We want to do that. And the other one, I think we plan to bring to the next meeting. I think it's, it got worked out in the last couple of days, so I think we're in good shape on, on the other one.
This is great news. I'm more looking to proactively move all the whole conversation forward, including how many we have based on the math going back along where it is, and what else we decide we can do going forward. And I do think that's apropos to this conversation, because it influences it, but...
You shared a lot of information with me, but the, my understanding was that for, was for a discussion after we got the two done, and we can, we can have that discussion.
We understood differently, and that's okay. That's all good.
Okay.
And we also included kind of a breakdown that I know in the packet, so...
I got it.
Okay.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for staff. Previously, it was stated that we need to get rid of the licenses that we have in reserve in order to explore other options of, creative options of garnering more licenses. So my question is, when we get, I don't want to say get rid of, when we issue the two that Mr. Rollup says that we have, does that allow us then to look at those other options, or do we need to get rid of the three in reserve on top of that?
No, we don't need to get rid of the three in reserve, and so, and, and Mr. Larson's going even one step farther, saying, I'd like to take a look at, do we really have a couple extras also available? And we're going to have that discussion, but what will happen once those two are issued, we will be at our limit.
Okay.
So then, the reserves don't count in that. So we, once you hit your quota, then there are things you can look at, and I think that was the initial part of our discussion, was we got to get, we have to issue all of our licenses before we can have that discussion. So, I mean, Mr. Larson talked about, well, there are some other things we can look at to free up some quota, and, and I think that's what you're kind of suggesting, right, Chris?
That's part of it.
Yeah.
I think we need to address a lot of parts of leading up to it and what happens now and what we do right this second. But yes, all of the above, and I just hope it's timely, because it's been a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else interested in speaking? Councilmember Nichols.
Just because it's relevant to the conversation right now, and again, I don't want to hold up flights. I'm a yes on flights. I'm excited about flights. I really like flights. I should say that. But I guess it sounds like there's math involved here, and I think probably, at least me, and I don't know if other members of council also lack an understanding of how the math goes with liquor licensing. It would be helpful, I think, if you're going to have the conversation with Councilmember Larson anyway, just to see what those numbers are and kind of what the rules are, so we can have an understanding of how liquor licensing is working at the city and in the state of Wisconsin.
We've got something that we produced previously, I think it even predates Diane, so we can get that information.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Good.
See, no one else registered, interested in speaking on this one, so if you'll take the role on 24-505.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 24-506, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for athletics facility at 108 West New York Avenue and property located at southeast corner of West Custer Avenue and Kentucky Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered to speak on this. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Nichols.
Sorry, I guess because we didn't approve the zone change here, what is our next step?
We can't, they can't do anything with it, right? So do we just table it? Or do we have to vote it down?
I mean, the other one you, was defeated, so it's not, it's
This has nothing to go with it.
Right.
So does it just, does it just, do we just remove our motion in second and it just goes away?
That would probably be the easiest thing.
You could do that, yes.
That would be, that would probably be the best option.
Okay. Can I ask whoever made the motion in the second, just remove it and this will go away?
Absolutely. Was it me? Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So no action on 24506 due to the previous action at council. Okay. That handles the action items for us this evening. Moving on to council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. First up, we have discussion and direction to city manager. This is a follow-up to the budget workshop. Specifically, this is tax bill projections. Giving, what we need to do tonight is we need to come away with direction for city council or city staff, specifically finance, on how to start wrapping up the operational budget to be able to present to us at the end of October and be published to the, to the public in mid-October, early to mid-October. Ms. Combs, did you want to share anything? I know you've shared some information via email with all of us in hard copies tonight. Do you want to, do you have some stuff you want to share before we start chatting?
Sure. There was a couple of different items that have been asked throughout the last couple of days. And I know I tried presenting some of the same information that I had provided during the budget workshop. Again, I want to say these are projections based off of data that I have available to me at this moment from the DOR, Department of Revenue. And I'm taking this from the finance perspective, not from the assessor perspective. So, but there's a lot of moving parts. So I can understand why it's confusing. So I'll kind of just walk through what I just put together for tonight, just to try to explain some of those moving pieces, because I think that's part of the confusion, or the questions, I should say, just trying to understand all those different moving parts. Because this year, you had the Wisconsin Act 12 that changed, which impacted the assessed values. You also had the revaluation. So there's a lot of different moving pieces to this. So I, the first page was the 2024 levy limit worksheet. What I'm trying to show here is net new construction for the city of Oshkosh is the .677. So on the levy limit worksheet, this is what, how we receive it from the state. The state provides these numbers. These aren't untouched by me. These are numbers strictly provided by the state. I know in one of the other budget workshops we talked about, there's a second page with the adjustments. So that would be line nine. That is the line that I can touch, basically. Everything else is pre-filled by the state of Wisconsin. So you will see net new construction on line number six. And then you'll also see on line number eight, how it subtracts the 2025 personal property aid. We've talked about how with Act 12, personal property assessed values were removed from the statement of assessments. Well, because of that, the state is also giving the city additional aid. I think a question was asked to me at the last budget workshop, was it proportionate? So the next page is my attempt at determining whether or not it was proportionate. So it's showing 74 million from the 2023 statement of assessment. That was what was allocated to personal property. So that amount is removed from the statement of assessment going forward. So that was about 1.84% of the total statement of assessment in 2023. If you go down, the personal property aid increased in 2023 to 2024. Well, that's a typo. It's going to be increasing in 2025, I think. So 24 to 25, my bad. So that, I tried comparing that increase in aid to the 2023 approved tax levy. That was about 1.5%. So you'll see there's a little bit of a difference. But I am not 100% sure what the state was trying to tie to. So that approved tax levy increase includes our adjustment line item, which is what I've said we can use for debt. So what I think the state might have been trying to compare to was that 2023 tax levy before adjustments. If that's the case, then we're at about 2%. So this was just me trying to compare because that question, I think, was asked in the last budget workshop of when they took away that assessed value and they gave us the aid, was it equal? I think they attempted. I'm not saying it was perfect. But I was trying to show what I thought was asked. So that's kind of one piece of the changes that we are going to see for the 2024 tax bill. And then I wanted to go by assessed value.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think part of the point we're trying to make is that there's more to this than just how commercial and residential went. And this is a total, every city in the state is dealing with this issue because we all had personal property tax. But we were trying to get our arms around what exactly did we get? It was previously 1.84. Did they get it exactly right? The answer's no, but I don't think that was a stated goal by the state anyway. I'm sorry, Julie.
Oh, perfect. And feel free to ask questions as I talk to, because this is me just trying to summarize what I think were the questions that I've been asking. So assessed value by property class. So the first sheet was the 2023 statement of assessment. You can see residential was about 59%. Commercial was about 34%. Personal property is the last one listed, which was about 1.8%. So that was the last statement of assessment that will show the personal property. So my next page was, nothing else changed other than if we just eliminated personal property in 2023, no assessed values changed, nothing else changed whatsoever. All the same numbers as 2023 statement of assessment, except for that line item. You'll see residential increased at 60%, commercial 34%, manufactured factoring 5%, and then you can see there's some other classifications. So that's kind of, if we just eliminated personal property, that's kind of how the assessed values would have shown. The next page is the 2024 statement of assessment. This includes the no more personal property. This also includes the revaluation figures. On this slide, or this sheet, it shows residential is now 67% of the total assessed value. Commercial is now 27% of the total assessed value. So that is what we're looking at today. That is what has been filed with Department of Revenue today. Hypothetically speaking, is the next slide. Hypothetically speaking, we, the municipality determines the assessed value. The state determines the equalized value. Hypothetically speaking, if we use what the state determined for the equalized value for commercial, only commercial, that's the only one I updated on this one, we would be at 64% residential and 30% commercial. And that's using the commercial equalized value, but everything else is assessed value.
Is it easy enough just to jump to that number? Or do we have to reassess to get to the equalized value number?
We have to revalue.
We have to re, I'm sorry, revalue.
Yeah, just showing you that if you could, if you could magically snap your fingers and get to where I think all of us would like you to go.
Yeah.
That, that's what the impact would be, about halfway. It's about halfway.
How long does that snap take?
The snap takes a full revaluation here.
Okay. And that's just revaluation of the commercial properties? Just to, just to
Again, we're snapping our fingers, so the, the, the full answer would be, based on everything they're telling us, we got to do a full revaluation. What that means can be subject to interpretation. We might be, what we're trying to do is not go through, our residential, our staff did the residential, and they did an outstanding job. They were at 100.4%, was it, Kelly? So, I mean, they just, they nailed it.
Yeah.
So I think we can do just some statistical analysis and hopefully not go through a lot of the work. Because that was a lot of work. The commercial one is the one I know, I know you guys are all, you know, concerned about that one. And I think Julie was just trying to show, if we could do it, where would it get us? It would get us about halfway back. Because we swung from 57 to almost 68. Well, no, 67.29. This would take us back to about 64. So, and then that's, you also get a rough idea of what happened because of the personal property. So 60% was what you used for personal property. It's like, so it'd go from 60 to 64 instead of 60 to 67. Is that, I mean, we're, these are a lot of different ways to look at it, but we're like, let's show it. Let's just show you guys so you guys can kind of absorb it.
What you're saying, though, at the end of next year after we revale, it's basically going to be 64, 31. That's roughly where we're going to be.
Ideally.
Yeah.
That was in practice.
And presumably, that residential number will increase also, because it's a full year later.
It very well could. But if you read some of the statistics, it, this past year has been fairly modest. So yeah, I mean, would it go up 7, 8%? Yeah, it could. But commercial will also go up in addition to where the state and our assessors, you know, came up with different numbers. State does it at a macro level. The assessor does it at a micro level. That's the best way I can describe it. But they, we got to reconcile that.
I just add the caveat, just so that we don't end up in a place a year from now where someone says, well, you said that mine might go down, but it didn't. It went up. And so I just want to add the caveat that values may continue to go up next year, if, even if we do a statistical revaluation, because statistics are just based on numbers.
Change is the constant.
Yeah. Okay.
The next slide was the major class comparison. This just kind of shows, from the state perspective, I found, community development showed me that they analyze it, what the city has used for assessed value compared to equalized value. So from 2017 to 2023, I use for the example, basically how far we have been from equalized value each year. So you can see, some years residential has been higher than commercial. Some years, commercial has been higher than residential. And I know everyone feels for the residents, but that says some years residents pay higher and some years, commercial pays higher. I mean, in the ideal world, we'll always have the fair share. But based off of assessed values, sometimes one rises faster than the other. And the proportion isn't always changed every single year. So it just kind of shows that there is that fluctuation.
Would a more frequent revaluation help that?
Potentially, but then you also have the increased cost. So, I mean, even from
But I mean, just the equity between the two.
Well, it depends. If you take a look at 2017 to 2022, they were kind of the same without a full revale. The last full revale was 2017. That's why we were so high up there.
Yeah.
But even then, we were three points off. But then we started, but then by 2019, commercial ratio was higher. And then we just bounced back and forth. And I think the idea was, they've kind of tracked one another, but in the last two years, that tracking has just fallen off. So my experience has been, the answer is generally no. But in the last two years, the answer to your question is clearly yes. So it, but this is pretty unusual. But I think, I think this is part of the pandemic and what happened to commercial properties and everything. That, you know, I think our, our assessor said, well, this really impacted it. And I think the state was like, yeah, it did, but not as much as we think. So call it a disagreement. I mean, they accept, I mean, there's not an accepting or not accepting of them. We file it and then they say, here's what we think your ratio is. I think we were surprised that, as, as we mentioned to you guys. Anyway, I'm sorry.
I don't want to repeat it necessarily, but that's sort of where I'm most concerned with the whole thing at this point. Because what that sounds like in layman's terms, and this is not my strongest subject, so help me, as you've been doing, Julie, I appreciate it. But it sounds to me like the revaluation for this year, the portion where we are most out of spec is commercial and is lower than it would be otherwise. And that shifts a lot of the overall burden to residential. The personal property tax notwithstanding, because it's 1.84%. I haven't gotten to what the exact number of discrepancy is, but it's a lot more than 1.84%. And to me, to dig down to the numbers, the important part and why we ask the question of, show us real properties and what their increase is at a 0% levy increase. When 99% of residential properties show an increase even at 0% levy, that to me says the value of the commercial properties is so far low that this is the year where it shifted further than the sheet has been out of spec for an awful long time. And that's why we have to do it again. Am I getting that correct? Or am I speculating too much in there?
There is a question that we, you tossed out this afternoon that I wasn't able to respond to.
Sure.
And it, if you take a look, if we had done, I think we have the statement of assessment, don't we, Kelly?
Yep.
Or Julie, yeah. So if you take a look at the chart that's up there and the difference, 2023, there was a difference of about 9% between commercial and residential. And I think now the gap is about 14%. So
A lot.
It's increased. That's a relative term on the answer.
Sure.
But, I mean, compared to what we've had the last couple of years, when it's plus two, minus two, I mean, it's really flipped back and forth. Clearly, there's a division.
Yep.
So the commercial arguably has been paying a larger share. And I think they would argue they've been paying a larger share than they should have. And so the DOR is saying, well, you know, we think it was, wasn't as high. But all the values have gone up. And as we said, the commercial went up less than the residential. They all went up, but, but I think the average originally was 30% for commercial, 70% for residential. And maybe it should have gone up more for commercial based on what the DOR's opinion is. So that's kind of where we're struggling with it. But the gap, I mean, it already went from, you know, the commercial ratio was 76 to 74 and 22. And then they only went down to 75, but residential went down to 66. So residential was already paying a smaller share because the ratio went down. So now it's just reversing it. And then it won't reverse, it'll, it'll, the gap will close. And that's really, I think, what we're, what we're struggling with is the gap needs to close and the gap didn't close like we expected it. And I think to your point, the gap, the gap actually opened up a little more.
Yes, and that's where, where I'm coming from is, again, I understand all that not as well as some people, but I do understand all that. What I have to talk to is the people who own homes. And five months ago, we said, just because we're revaluing your home does not mean your taxes are going to go up. What we found out through this process is that the third-party assessor didn't provide us the numbers the state thought we should have, is a way to put it right. And that the real-world example is 99-some percent of properties, residential properties, will see an increase in their tax bill, even if we do not raise the levy. Do I have that correct?
That, that part you are correct.
We have to answer that question to our constituents, and that's what's hard. I'm not trying to ask hard questions or pointed questions, but I think that's the answer people need to understand. Because we said that will not happen.
Well, I think the point we were trying to make was that if everybody goes up the same, then it won't result in any increase. But the fact that the increases were, were much different. And we talked about that 30% and 70%, the average was 50, but there was going to be a difference. But I think the fear was that my, my, the average residential assessment went up 70%. And I think the fear was that, oh, this is going to go up 70%. No, it won't. Number one, we're the only governmental entity that taxes on assessed value. So what we're only talking about is the city portion. And I think, and Julie hasn't gotten to the final pages yet, but it's, it's only the city portion. But is it going to go up because the averages, the 70% average is higher than the, the average average of 50%? And commercial's only 30. So depending on where you are in that, if you're higher than 50%, you're going to go up. I've, there's a handful of residential properties who didn't go up more than 50%. So their, their increase won't be as significant.
I get that. And again, it's, it's a matter of not just principle, because any amount of increase in tax bill when we're not raising the levy, I think is substantial. And that counts a lot, because we're providing a service. And if we're not getting more service, why are those folks paying more? It can't just be a mathematical disadvantage we put people in. But I, I mean, I see your point. And if we were talking about 30% of residential properties decreasing or not increasing, it'd be a different story. But we're talking about under 1%. And that means the whole thing didn't go great.
Yeah. Anytime the, anytime these numbers vary from a norm, that's, that's when it causes the most, you know, concern. And that's why we're always careful about being measured on that thing. And, and the problem is, is we're going to take a swing and then we're going to take a swing again. And, you know, it will likely go a little bit the other way. And I think Julie's point was, it'll go a little bit. It won't go all the way, because it, so, but commercial clearly didn't get up to the amount the DOR thought was there. And, I mean, we can sit and disagree with that. And we're going to, we're going to look at it with the, with the assessor, the contract assessor, I should say. And I think, I mean, I haven't, I pushed Kelly back from talking, but I think we're going to take a look at, you know, are we even going to continue with that person? And I think that's a legitimate, that's a legitimate question. And I have concerns, and I know Kelly has concerns about that.
I have a math question just real quick while we're on this slide. So if, it sounds like our ratio percentage for residential for 2024 was 100.4%. Is that right?
Yeah.
And then what, what was the ratio for commercial?
86.
86.
Is it?
85.2.
85.2.
Okay. Sounds like a 15%.
Just so I make sure that I'm understanding what's happening, in a perfect world, they would both be 100. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
I guess to point the concern that I have.
Councilmember Esslinger is going first, sorry. And then Councilmember Flom.
Thank you, Mayor. We have many, many moving parts here. I hope I live to see the day where we do not get revenue from assessing people's property, trying to figure out what it's worth. This is the dumbest thing I've ever seen government do. We need to figure out a way to not do this. But we're here. And so the fact is, we were told a story that with these assessments that have gone up, in some cases over 100%, that there are going to be people that the taxes will not go up. In fact, they may go down. And now, as Councilmember Larson alluded to, the fact of the matter is, even if we don't do anything with the levy, 99% of the people are going to have a tax increase. So let's get real and say, we are going to raise the levy. I don't think we have much of a choice. So that 99% now becomes 100%. And if I have to go out and tell constituents that own homes, and again, I think Councilmember Larson alluded to this, if I have to tell people that own homes that they're going to have to subsidize a wrong number that was produced for commercial, for businesses, we're going to need Secret Service to help us out, because people are going to be ticked off. So I don't, answer this question, I'm confused on this commercial. You keep saying that the number was not correct according to the state for commercial. Why would we busy ourselves with spending all this time and money on trying to come up with a number for commercial assessments when the state already has one?
I think that's a Kelly question, because, you know, there's a line between the city treasurer, who's calculating the tax bill, and the city assessor, which is part of Kelly's department, so.
As Mark had mentioned, the state looks at it from a macro level. They look at the city in particular. They look at the commercial sales that come through the city. But they don't kind of get into the nitty-gritty day-to-day that our contractor assessor did. So they just kind of applied an overall 6% increase. And so we don't, we didn't know that number before, you know, we sent in the statement of assessment. So that's what they do. They have, the municipality is responsible to send, to assess the properties and send it in as a statement of assessment in the summer. And then in August, they come out with their equalized values. So that's where, then we crunch those numbers and see what, you know, if there is a difference. And then, you know, we've been talking to DOR and kind of trying to figure out what their methodologies were of how they came up with that increase, reviewing our sales that we've seen, incomes that we requested from commercial property owners. So that's going to be part of the process. But DOR has been nothing but helpful to try to help us through this. So we, we definitely will be taking their help and try to align our methodologies and thoughts with how they approach it.
Okay, but I'm not sure that answers my question. If they have this method of, I don't know how they come up with 6% or whatever they do, why are they requiring us to go through these hoops? Again, if they, if they have an idea of what they're going to do, then mathematically, they can tell us a number. So then they say, well, you got to go through the hoops and come up with your number, and then we'll tell you if it's right or not. and then we'll tell you if it's right or not. That makes no sense. Of course, this is government.
I can't disagree with you. My poor answer, and I apologize for this, but I'm going to, I'm going to apologize before I give it. It's like, that's what the statute says. We assess it at the local level, and it's a, it's a micro-analysis. We take a look at property by property. The state just takes a broad approach. And I'm not criticizing the state when I say this, because we've had struggles with staffing, particularly the assessor area is one of them. And we've had that challenge, and I know the state has been looking for people. And this is a theory, nothing more. My theory is that as understaffed as they were, they used a rather simple approach, 6%. I would have thought it would have taken a little more economic analysis and take a look at regions and things like that. But they're taking a very, very macro look at this. And when it's close, we don't really question it. It's like, we said 80%, they said 80%. We said 100%, they said, you know, 99.9. It's close. The fact that this was in such disagreement says, you know, there's something weird. And I'm not going to blame the state, but, you know, I'm not happy that our assessor didn't get it to 100, because our staff got to 100. Why? I don't know. The state does their analysis, and the state's infallible. And so we, we have to take their number as is. What I don't like about it is that now we have to go through the cost of another assessment, and that bothers me. So I share your frustration.
And just to note, you know, we need to be within 10% of the equalized value. So that's 110% or 90%. So we are at 85%. So when we learned that, right away, we worked with the contractor-assessor and looked at all commercial sales to see if we could make up that fine, you know, that 5% there. We reached out to some other municipalities, and some of them had the same issue as us, too. So if some of Mark's theories are correct, I don't know. But regardless, we would have been compliant if we were right at 90%. So that still would have been a difference in between our 101% that staff did for residential versus that. But ideally, we want to get it to be 100%, so they're both equitable.
Okay. So if we're 104% on residential, to me, that's saying we're overtaxing, we're over-assessing by 4%?
It's actually 100.98.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're like, I just looked at the exact number, Mark's, 100.98. So we are like, right there. And I mean, I will give kudos to our staff. I mean, every year, they're preparing for a revaluation. They're updating the sales. They're looking at permits. They're doing inspections. And, and that's what they are great at, and they know the area. So they did an amazing job, and the sales that are coming in in 2024 here are aligning with the residential values that we have seen. So that's why we are very hopeful that revaluation in '25 will really not have a big impact on the residential properties. And we have been talking with DOR how we can minimize that impact.
Okay, so then moving forward, if we have to give some type of projection or direction to move forward, and I've read the email that you sent with all the, you know, all the questions. Thank you, by the way, for that. That was very informative. It appears to me that if we wait, if we use the same assessed value that we have previous, we can do that for another year without any ramifications.
We cannot, oh, for your 2024 values.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes. We received our first notice of noncompliance last year in the fall of 2023. We'll receive another one. So DOR does give you an opportunity to, you know, do it yourself. But in a couple of years, if we do not get into compliance, then they will step in and monitor the revaluation.
Right. Okay, so follow me here then. So I don't want to go to a constituent and say, we're going to use the new assessed value for residential and commercial, and it's wrong, but we're going to apply that, and your taxes are going to go, 100% of you, your taxes are going to go up, and then we'll figure it out later, next year or whenever. I don't know. After, after we told them, a lot of them, your taxes are not going to go up. Now 100% are going to go up, and then we're going to tell them we're going to fix it another year? No. I, I don't know. Maybe I'm the only one. What I say, we use the same number that we had. It's wrong. It's out of, out of compliance, so to speak. But we can get our heads, hands and heads around that. People understand that. We have an issue. Let's fix the issue before we try to apply something that makes no sense. That's my two cents.
Can I get clarification on something? Because I want to make sure I heard his question correct and your answer correct, because I, I don't know that they were. Because according to emails that we all received today, and I'm sorry, I'm cutting in front of Councilmember Flohm, but I want to make sure that's, that's pointed out. The emails from DOR said we couldn't do that.
We cannot use 2023 numbers.
Correct. And so that's where I think you had said 24. He was, I believe, Councilmember Rassinger was inferring 23 numbers.
The ones that we got the bill from this year.
You're talking about 23.
Yeah, we cannot use those numbers.
We cannot.
What happens if we do?
We cannot.
What happens if we do?
That's what I see.
Are they going to sue us?
We received an email from DOR today, and it was forwarded to everybody, so I'll let council make that decision.
We're all asking the same question. What's the penalty if we do?
I don't know.
Probably share revenue. I mean, that would be a violation probably of our levy limit worksheet, the statement of assessments. I mean, everything we filed with DOR, they're saying we cannot go back and refile. So all of our documentation is based off of that document. So that goes off the statement of assessment, statement of taxes, levy limit worksheet, tax increment worksheet. So basically, every document I file with the Department of Revenue would be wrong.
The other part is, understandably, the focus is on residents. I'm a resident. I, I know the impact on mine. The answer to your question is, what would be the recourse? Every commercial property owner could argue that they've been overvalued and that you ignored the assessment that has been accepted by the state. It's accepted with a lower ratio, but it's still accepted by the state. And we would be, we could be subject to lawsuits from property, from commercial property owners that we over-assess them compared to others. So that's the answer. And it's like, I don't like telling you that, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I just said, oh, yeah, let's just go do it. I think one of the questions that one of the councilmembers asked was, well, what if we did that? What about the residences? The residents could make an argument that they've been over-assessed. And it's like, it isn't that they've been over-assessed. They've been assessed dead-on. What happened was the commercial, in the state's view, didn't get increased enough. That's, that's their interpretation. But it's still in compliance. It's still a valid valuation, and we're required by law to follow it. And I think that DOR's recourse would be shared revenue. And that's about.
Well, then they can come to a council meeting and come to this podium, and they can tell the residents of Oshkosh that they're going to pay more in taxes. After they've been told a story they're not going to, and that's fine. If they want to come forward and do that, I mean, do you really think they're going to do that? That's crazy. And here again, I mean, we've got all of these things going on. The school just took $195 million. The wheel taxed, everything that goes on. We told people their taxes weren't going to go up. They are. This is so frustrating. It's so frustrating. I'm tired of it.
Councilmember Flohm followed by Councilmember Larson.
I'd like to echo a lot of those sentiments. The concern that I have in regards to the revaluation, I spoke with the City of Appleton city assessor, and they do a revale every four years. And I know that, to City Manager Roelhoffs' point earlier, the issue with doing revales more frequently, yes, it is more expensive, but we're really in uncharted territory post-COVID in regards to property values. So we probably should consider doing them regularly now at this point in time. You know, if you want to do them every five years, you know, every seven years, fine. But we should be doing these regularly, because I'm concerned about wild fluctuations in property values, and I think we should see some more consistency. I mean, just looking at the chart here and the major class comparisons, you start to see that bifurcation happen around 2022. And we, you know, we thought the trend was going to reconcile this year, it didn't. It got worse. So we should be really focusing on doing our revales more regularly. If there's any direction that I have tonight, that would be that. But also, just looking at the final page, the updated tax levy projections, it's not even at a 0% increase. You're basically saying, even if we drop the levy by 0.89%, and I know that the levy percentage number isn't necessarily the best overall barometer for this. But just looking here, I mean, rates still go, not just the rates, but the real change still goes up. So the frustration that I have with this is that essentially, some agency has been taken away from this body about how high taxes are going to go up before we set the mill rate. It's still going to go up no matter what. And the frustration that I really have is, I need to go to a property owner in the city of Oshkosh, or, you know, working family, perhaps a single mother who owns a home, and says, your taxes have gone up even though I haven't taken a single vote to do that. That is extremely frustrating. And on top of that, we know it's a bad revale. And what I want to know is, for this specific contractor, when did this specific contractor, Kelly, tell you that the numbers may have been bad? Was it after we submitted this to the state or beforehand?
The statement of assessment was submitted in July, and it was August 1st, I believe, when the state released their equalized values, preliminary numbers.
Sure.
So right away, staff calculated those figures. That's when we found out that there was a difference. We didn't find out any sooner than that. And we did it on our own, and right away, we were talking to the, our contractor, saying, hey, there's an issue here.
Is there a penalty in the contract if they don't get it right?
That's something we're looking into.
Okay, thank you.
Not to try to influence counsel too much, but tonight is about tax bill projections and going forward. There are lots of good questions, and they deserve lots of good answers. But many of the things that have been done in the past are done, in my opinion. Tonight's about giving them direction on how to best move forward. We have a very short window of time before the budget is required to be published, and then we have to sit down and go through that budget. So it'd be best to look forward a little bit more than looking backward, in my opinion. Councilmember Larson followed by Deputy Mayor.
I agree with that, too, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. And Jacob, I mean, you put that better than I will, but that's exactly what I was getting at. City Manager Roelhoffs, I just wanted to point out that you're not wrong. The major class comparison is the most important part of this to a degree. And we can absolutely make the case that, yes, there are discrepancies by class for an awful long time. The only thing that's different right this second is, we know what's broken. And I can't look these people in the eye and tell them that they should pay their tax bill based on a number that we know is incorrect, and we know why it's incorrect. What the recourse is, I have no idea, Mr. Mayor, to your point. And I understand we need to move forward, but that's where I'm not comfortable. I'm just not. And I don't know, that was why all the emails back and forth were great, and that's why the state helping was great, and Representative Paul Mary helping was great, and people trying to get those answers for us, because we all know it's broken. It, we should also probably be reiterating to folks, because I don't know that people are getting it from this conversation yet, but we have to do a reevaluate, reevaluation again. And that wasn't fun the last time we did it. And now we're going to both do that again and use numbers that we know are not right to calculate a tax bill. I have a hard time with that.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Flohm again, unless you'll let Councilmember Stevenson speak for a first time. Deputy Mayor. So I don't have major quibbles with what everybody here is saying. Of course, this is super frustrating. We all know that. We knew that going into this meeting. The one thing that I'd like to point out, though, because it's been brought up several times, is that I don't believe that I've ever heard anybody guarantee that our individual taxes are not going to go up. I know I've never told anybody that, and I know when we had the assessor here rolling it out, she was extremely careful to say, hey, this is the early projections. This is what it looks like. And we, you know, it shouldn't go up if you're over this, and guess what? We hit that we shouldn't, you know, and that's where we're at right now. So, you know, all due respect, I love the fire, obviously, because I'm not happy with this either. But moving forward is what we need to do now, because this is the, the cards that we're currently holding. They're not the cards that we want. We don't have aces when we want them. And with that in mind, I think several councilmembers up here have alluded to the fact that we're likely not going to be, get out of this without some sort of a levy limit increase in addition. What that is, is the conversation that I think we need to have now. I know the last budget cycle, I threw out a number just to get us started, and, you know, I didn't really have any background for that, so I don't really want to do it again. I just, you know, I just threw something out to get it going. But honestly, that's what I'm more interested in is, I don't love the 5.08% number on top of what we're looking at. And that's the number that we prevented or presented to get us to the increases that are projected. But that's what I'd like to hear about, is what other people have as solutions to bring that number down. Looks like we now have Councilmember Stevenson followed by Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, I, I don't like where our assessments went, obviously, either. I guess, is there, I think this really is maybe more of an issue with the state. I mean, you guys are going to probably be talking with them more after this. Do you get the sense, is there any feeling of recourse, so that they could ever change that number? Is that just a completely off-the-table type of thing?
The 2024 numbers cannot be changed.
Okay.
Can we do something to minimize the impact on doing the 2025 revale? To keep our costs down, but not sacrifice accuracy, for lack of a better term?
Sure.
And I think the answer is, yeah, we can do that. But I think that we had an opportunity, and we took a look at what some of the other communities were doing, and we tried that, too, but the DOR didn't make any adjustments to our, to our equalized value. If they had lowered their, their equalized value number, then we would have been closer. And I think Julie even said, if they had lowered it by $94 million, we'd be okay. And we'd still be talking about, we're close to 10%, but we wouldn't be having the same discussion. So we can't change their number, and as was pointed out by Mr. Pansky at the DOR, we can't go back to last year's numbers, which several of you asked that question. So, I mean, I'd never been asked that question before, but I was like, well, I guess it bears asking. We asked it, and they were pretty emphatic. Just background, I mean, Mr. Pansky, I have a great deal of respect for. He used to be our deputy assessor here many years ago. He is, you know, he knows his assessing stuff, so I don't have any reason to question. And he knows Oshkosh. He knows, you know, he knows, you know, he knows property valuation as well as anybody. So, no, and he, that he was the one who wrote chapter and verse on all that stuff. So, no, I don't think we can.
Sure.
I don't like that answer, but I don't have to like every answer I get.
Sure. No, I hear, and I, I think we're running into a handful of issues that it seems cities run into a little bit pretty often with the state. This does seem like a state issue. I mean, this seems like, to Paul's point, I don't know why we're kind of duplicating efforts in this regard. I think the state, we hire an assessor. Why don't they just take our assessor's word? It's a little odd. So I, while I know our body cannot change state processes, we can't change state law, maybe our struggles, our cries will, I don't know, get state legislation to look into this a little bit more, because I can't imagine we're going to be the only ones that, especially, I think we're hitting an inflection point right here where we kind of hit a perfect storm, right? We had pandemic, we had pricing for houses just go through the roof. I can't imagine we're the only community that's going to be struggling with this, so.
We got, there was a notice. I saw, I had emails. I was catching up on emails just before the meeting, but there was one that I think Julie must have been the one that found it. But there was the number of people who are, the number of communities that are out of compliance. And while Julie's looking that up, I'll give her a little bit of time. One of the answers that the state could do and should do, in my opinion, and I proposed this some 20 years ago and nearly got strung up, because I suggested that it be done by the state or by county, which is exactly what's done in other states. And someone literally just asked me that question this morning. Couldn't you guys just do this? And it's like, that would make sense. I mean, your point is, why can't it be, you know, why, why don't we just use the state in the number? Some states, they do the whole shebang. Some states, then they're only, if we did, but even if we did it by county, at least there would only be 72 different assessments going on, and there'd be some continuity. So I'll let, yeah, I think Julie has another one that, but.
It's Rep. Palmieri sent the email, but it was not only at like 4:42. It's basically showing that in 2022, this Department of Revenue sent out 310 notices of noncompliance. And in 2023, they sent out 335. So that would be how many municipalities in the state were out of compliance that they had to send notices to. So it's not just Oshkosh.
On that question, I actually texted Representative Palmieri in the moment, and I said, in 2023, what's the percentage of total? And it's actually 17% of municipalities received a first or second notice.
That would have been my, yeah, that sounds right.
So, yeah, I, again, I guess those are my thoughts on kind of where these numbers land. And I, again, I share sentiments with everybody up here. I'm really disappointed that we're in the situation. I do think that staff did a good job. Obviously, you guys hit that number on the dot. The state and our contractor maybe have a little bit more to talk about, a little bit more discrepancy. But to Carl's point, Deputy Mayor Bulow, so I'm bad at using titles up here. I do think we kind of have to give you guys some direction, right? You guys are trying to look at us on, on where, are you looking, where, what levy increase we're comfortable with? Is that kind of the direction you're, you're asking? Is that kind of the direction you're asking for right now, or?
In the past, that's what we did ask for, but, and I respect the fact that counsel doesn't want to commit to that number. You're going to have to commit to a number by about November 10th, or whatever that second Tuesday is in November, but, you know, on October 18th, you're going to get the budget delivered from Ms. Colmas and myself, and we'll have to give you a number. I can, I want to try to end this really bummer of a discussion with some positive notes. Ms. Benke, our HR manager, informed me that, and this is true to what the mayor said many times, our health insurance increase is probably going to be half of what you see there. So that's good news. And those are the types of things we'll be looking at. Julie already wrote it down, you see? She, and half of it's like, but, you know, that increase is $640,000, so that's when it just got to 320. So those are the types of things that we're going to be looking at. And looking at, you know, what other things we can do to either raise revenue, find more efficiencies, and, you know, address things that we can do to lower the levy so that it gives you, because you know it's going to be some bad news going to a lot of people. I try and every time I can. But I, so, in the past, the answer was yes to your question. I understand if you don't want to give me a number. I got to give you a number, and you can like it or dislike it, and we're going to respect that. So if you don't want to give me a number, especially given the fact that you're still absorbing all this stuff, I totally understand.
Okay. And I don't mean to take the mic up. Sorry, guys.
And I'm taking the mic up, too.
But, yeah, so I mean, if you're okay with us not giving you a number right now, I guess the sentiment is maybe as low as we can possibly get. I know you guys, just traditionally, in the past with the budget, I think we usually come in with almost like a, like a worst-case scenario, right? And then we get our budget gurus, and they maybe come back with a little bit more refined number. And I know we have maybe some other revenue stuff out there that we're kind of hanging on with. So, I don't know, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, if you guys are okay with it, I'd be okay with not giving a direction now and just say, try to make it as low as you can.
I think, I'll comment after we've got Councilmember Nichols and Councilmember Flohm, and then maybe I'll go, too.
Thank you. So I guess we've all been talking about two different things. I guess maybe the first thing, I keep saying at these meetings, I'm going to take my lawyer hat off, and I'm just going to stop saying that, because I just keep it on. But I know that I emailed with the city attorney and others today and talked about kind of what our next steps are going to be about the revaluation. And I want, maybe a closed session's the appropriate time to have that conversation about what our recourse could be against that contractor. I know there was mention that we may, it sounded like we may use the same contractor again. Don't love that. So I know we can talk about that separately. But I'd love to talk about what our recourse could be. If there's not a statute on point, we do have several representatives that represent the city of Oshkosh. I would love to ask, invite them in to a meeting and say, here's our concern, here's what's happening to us, this is happening to other municipalities that you represent. I'd love to do a resolution from us, so that we can show that we're advocating for the people of Oshkosh at the state level. I'd love to look at what litigation options we could have to actually have the state change their rules, because it's unfair and it is affecting people in Oshkosh. And I'm not asking for a response from city attorney at this point. I don't, I think she would give, she shouldn't give a response anyway, I think, at this point, because those are all things that we need to talk about, protected by privilege, and thinking about strategy. But I would, I would welcome that meeting. I don't know if other people would welcome that meeting, but I think that it's important that we at least consider that, so that we can go back to these constituents who are negatively affected by a rule that we can't change ourselves, to say, here are the six things that we're doing, though, to try to make sure this doesn't happen again to us. Is that something that would be reasonable for staff to help us do?
I don't know necessarily about the state stuff, but the contract that we currently have, it's absolutely fair game.
And I guess maybe a specific meeting to talk about recourse here. I think this is such an impact, and it's going to be something that, number one, it's complicated, because it's a complicated thing to understand generally, but I think it's important that we are able to speak to it intelligently, and then also be able to speak intelligently to what we're doing as next steps. So we don't have to decide that right now, but that's something I'm thinking about. Maybe I'll send that email later. The second thing that we're talking about is obviously the increase. I agree with Councilmember Stevenson. I'd love to not give you a number today. I'd love that number to be negative. If we did give you a number, just because people are seeing an increase, I saw that, and we interrupted her, but she, Finance Director Colmas said negative 0.89% levy increase, and I'm sure that number has a reason, so I would love to hear that. But I think that what I would also like to understand, there is a scenario that we had one property on the private side in my professional life that had a major budget shortfall. It's the only property we own that's actually managed by, or owned by a third party, we manage it. Major budget shortfall, and we flew 40 people to that property, put them in a room, and said, how do you save millions of dollars? And coming out of that meeting, we saved millions of dollars, and we're holding true to that at the end of 2024. I just want to understand, has that meeting happened at the city level? Have we identified synergies between departments? How we can leverage our purchasing power? How we can be more efficient as a city to not only, we don't have to cut services or increase taxes, you can also cut costs. So I want to understand, I guess, what that process looks like. And the last thing I'll say before I give up the mic, because I know I'm saying a lot. Councilmember Esslinger, when we had the first budget workshop, and it was echoed by Councilmember Bulow as we were talking through it, the cost to run the government is the cost to run the government. I agree with that. But I agree with Councilmember Stevenson that I'd love to not give you a number today, because we haven't been told how much it costs to run the government in 2025. We've been given projected increases in labor costs and potential insurance costs, but we've been given nothing else. So I don't think that we have the tools to give you a percentage today. So I'd love to wait and see kind of where you all come back, and also, again, understand where we've saved costs, because I know there, you can always squeeze some water out of a rock.
Councilmember Flohm?
Add on that, I will wrap up with my complaining and get to some direction here. The biggest thing for me is whittling down the projected net increase in levy, and seeing where we can make those efficiencies, where we can lower costs, to Councilman Nichols' point. I know it's, you know, the health insurance increase, that's been about half, great. I know we said that we typically run about 5% to 7% short staffing-wise, so if we can get these numbers into more actuals, that'd be great. And I don't feel comfortable giving you a number tonight, but if we can really narrow those down to something from projected to what we think may is the actual required levy increase to run the government, that's what I'd like to see. And then, you know, I'd like the number to be negative, but I know that may or may not happen based off of how much it costs to run the government at the end of the day. So with that in mind, and then again, that meeting of how can we save a little bit more money? You know, not cutting services, you know, trying our best not to raise taxes. I don't think anybody in this room wants to cut services at all. And so, you know, what can we do to, you know, be penny-wise, but not really cutting back on what we promise or are legally mandated to deliver to residents of our city? So that's what I'd like to see, if we can start getting these numbers in the actuals, and then I will, the more we can, the more actuals I see, the more comfortable I will feel with giving you an actual number. So that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. I was extremely encouraged by Councilmember Nichols' latest statements here. It sounds to me like he's saying, when the going gets tough, the tough get going. And two things that I always hate to hear when I hear in government is, that's the way we've always done it, and we can get sued. I hate those two terms. Well, have we done enough to see if we can get over this? We've asked someone at the state that's either in charge or makes a decision, that's one person. There's a lot of people down at the state. As was referenced, we have representatives here in this, two representatives in the city of Oshkosh that I would hope would help us out. We have state senators that I hope would help us out. And this isn't us just thumbing our nose and saying, we just don't care, we want to do this. We've got a serious problem. And is the government here for the people or not? You know, when you get into these situations, maybe the rules got to get bent a little bit, or massaged, or broken, or changed. So Councilmember Nichols, if you're talking about some kind of resolution to send to the state or to talk to people, please put my name on it. Please let me help you with whatever you need, if we can get together with the city manager, whoever on the city staff, because I'm just not, I'm not putting my name on anything when we've told, and one thing I do want to clarify is, when we talked about these assessment increases, we did say, some people's taxes are going to go down. It was on, we talked about it on that video that I think we put out on Channel 2 and Channel 10, because we had that, what was it? The residential was going to go up around 70%. So if you were under that, you were most likely to be about the same or less. You would be taxed less. So to be clear, we did say that in certain circumstances. So I think there, we have until November, whatever it is. We got to try, and just contact, I mean, I appreciate the effort so far, but for me, it's not enough. I just cannot go back to the voters, or the residents, and say, well, you just got to buck up. And that's just the way it is. It's the way we're going to do it. If I were the resident sitting on my couch watching this meeting, I'd be so ticked off right now. I mean, I would be, I'd be here at the next meeting, and I'd let all you know what I thought. And so I hope that we can, we are up here, we are voted in to do what's best for the residents, and if that means we have to actually work and get something done, let's get it done. Thank you.
Any other comments on the tax bill projections topic?
Councilmember Nichols mentioned that I purposely included that negative 0.89, and that was correct. I did purposely include that 0.89. I just did not get that far to explain why I purposely included that. So I wanted to, if you don't mind, quick, explain that piece of it. So when I initially showed this slide at the last budget workshop, I was strictly looking at, if you, when you say the no change in levy, I was strictly going, last year's levy limit worksheet had the $46,560,900 on that levy limit worksheet. So that's what I was using as my base, taking it very literal, saying that would be the exact same levy as last year. When you take into consideration Act 12, levy limit worksheet actually looks different because you get more personal property aid. So I expanded my various, more simplistic thinking of, no increase would be the exact same dollar amount as last year, to saying, okay, if we look at the 2024 levy limit worksheet, the state is subtracting that additional aid from what we had as allowed levy in 2023. So the negative 1.5 shows the amount the state is subtracting from our allowed levy limit because of that personal property aid. And when you get to that 0.89, that factors in net new construction. So with the changes at the state that are dictated basically on our levy limit worksheet, that is where I get to that negative 0.89. On the levy limit worksheet, you still have that adjustment line item. I kept that adjustment line in the exact same as in 2023, and that's how I came up with that 47,135. So when council members were asking me, what would be the no increase, to me, that negative 0.89 is as close to no increase as I can get, if that makes sense.
So to clarify, or just to make sure I see the math right, so after personal property aid, net new construction, and levy adjustment, there's a, if we did nothing else, it actually is 400, 4 and 1/4 less, okay? City Manager Rolloff indicated health insurance, a little bit lower, that's 320 grand. So since the last time we chatted in this moment, it's actually gone down 750,000 roughly, like that gap, or that amount, that savings, I don't know what we want to call it, but there's 750,000 that we have as a buffer or a starting point in the negative actually, before we even get back to zero. Is that fairly?
I think we're looking at it from two different angles. So on that bottom of that funding-based budget assumption, I mean, City Manager Rolloff was saying that 640,000 that we thought we were going to have to increase the levy is actually cut in half. But the other 4 and 1/4...
Would that not come off your 2,414 at the bottom of the sheet? Because it, these numbers weren't adjusted down here.
Right. Yeah, I think you're right.
So 4 and 1/4 is going to come off of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Now I see what you're saying, yes.
So 4 and 1/4 plus the 320, so really, so not increase levy on the second to last page that you guys have in front of you, which I think mostly you're looking at, where it shows 2.4 million, which is, equals a 5.08% increase, it's actually not, at the moment, it would be more like 1.7-ish.
Yeah. Another way of saying it is, our starting point for a 0% increase is really the 8.15, not the 8.22. We're going to, our rate can go down 7 cents.
Yeah.
And we're still at zero. So that's, I think, is that a fair way to say it?
What I'm trying to point out is that, at the moment, given that, off of this sheet, and I know nobody wants to give numbers, and that's cool, that's fine, to fund what we were currently doing with the current staffing levels, current programming, no changes to any of that stuff, it's really about 3 and 1/2% instead of the 5.08 to do that, which isn't as bad of a number. It's still a big number. Every dollar matters, I've said it numerous times, but there's already some of those savings as the numbers keep getting refined. So my hope is it'll get, of course, get better as well before we get into October. What I don't want for counsel to get to, though, is, at the absolute last minute, we are looking to cut seven figures, or multiple seven figures, and in this kind of a budget, that's people. And that is always an option, but doing it last moment is the least desirable thing possible. Cutting services, and we're in the people business, we're nothing else, we are in the people business. And that's a, the biggest percentage of our budget is people and the benefits that go along with them. So just, I don't want to get too far into, too late in the game that now we're scrambling, making uninformed, ill-advised decisions too late. That's the only thing I want to add. I know Deputy Mayor pushed his button, then Councilmember Nichols.
No, I just wanted to give kudos, actually, because Councilman Nichols talked about, you know, how do we run the government more smoothly and more efficiently? And I didn't get Director Colmas's permission to talk about this, but we have multiple different credit card processing systems, she's, yeah, cringing over there, that we're using right now. And she brought it to Long Range Finance, as this is something that we're going to be working on in the next couple of months to streamline that, get better rates, get better uniform processes. So I am encouraged that staff is already taking those steps, and that's, I think, what I'm hearing, that we want to hear more of, is where can we find any, you know, where can we find any fat left before we get down to muscle, is kind of what I'm hearing.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. And to that point, I guess, just two things. The first one is, I mentioned, we saved millions of dollars of that property. To the mayor's point, we did not fire a single person, and we actually increased their rates because we wanted them to be more efficient. And so we were able to actually do that without cutting people. The second thing is, to Councilmember Bulow's point, I do think that there are ways to drive efficiency. And so my ask of staff, I think when we have this conversation again, is, who's your team that's running that project to drive efficiency and to cut costs, to find synergies between departments? And just say, here's, we can leverage our size here more efficiently. And I think as a growing community, as a growing city, that's something we're going to have to do over and over again, because we keep getting bigger. And so we get to leverage our size a little bit better every time. Thanks.
If there's nothing else on this one, we'll move on to the next one. Thank you, counsel, for a good discussion on that. Next one up, actually, the next two are from Councilmember Esslinger. First one is sign up for citizen statements. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you. Counsel, I brought this up previously, I can't remember if it was this council or the last one, but anyway. We have the, as we saw here tonight, there was a gentleman that wanted to speak, and he didn't know how, he doesn't use computers, so he was confused with the signing up process. And then a gentleman came in that wasn't signed up. So my point here is, we have the requirement of signing up before you can speak to an item or for citizen statements, but we let people do it anyway. So I think to make things a little more clear and simpler for residents, just simply removing the requirement, if someone wants to sign up, great, that's fine, I don't have any problem with that. But the requirement, I would like to see us remove that. And, you know, back in the day, when I was on the council many, many years ago, it's just, we asked for the person's name and address, and they gave it to us, and then they went on. So it was a pretty simple process. Those are my thoughts.
So one of the main reasons for doing it, we made this change five, six years ago, roughly?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Somewhere in there. To just your point, they provide their name and address, and that's all they have to that's all they have to really do for the registration to speak. We also have usually a clipboard over by the officer or at the table, that if somebody in the audience hasn't had a chance, they can easily do that. But it's really actually a matter for the improving efficiency for the city clerk and the clerk's department, because what we have is, we have a list of registered speakers, we have their contact information, we have their actual spelling of their name, because those are all a matter of public record. And it allows any one council member, if they want to be able to go and backtrack to that person, we can do that. We know exactly who is here, and if we didn't make a good note, or we didn't write their address down well, and trying to reach it and doing outreach that we routinely do, there's a clear public record of who came here. So that was one of the main reasons for doing that, the efficiency. You're right. Tend to be a little bit looser in terms of how we run the meeting or how I run it. And that's how it was kind of, Mayor Paul Mary ran it, similarly, too. If they hadn't registered to speak, they're still allowed to. There's communities that you're required to register 24 hours in advance, and if you don't, you don't speak. Period. We're not like that. I think we're, I enjoy that, how liberal we are with the ability that we allow our citizens to speak to us, because the amount of minutes we give and where we give it in the meeting and the importance we give it. But it's a minor inconvenience, and we always have staff willing, ready, and able to help folks type in their name, address, and what agenda item. That's the only thing that they even have to do is just name an address, really. It's not an inconvenience. So.
So if I understand this correctly, we require someone to sign up, but we don't require them to sign up? Is that what?
They're required to provide their name and address, whether they step up here, whether they type in the computer. It's an efficiency that we've gained and allowed the meetings to continue on.
I understand they're required to give name and address, but in the rules, does it say that they have to sign up to speak on an agenda item or at citizen statements?
I don't have our city rules in advance. And as I requested yesterday of you, I was wondering if there was any information you'd like to provide council in advance of your topics, so council can have educated and informed.
I didn't know that this was a really.
But it'd be nice if council members would like to have those discussions.
Okay. Let's put it this way. If it is a requirement, let's just drop the requirement. We can look into it. And if there's, if it says required to give name and address, then I would suggest we drop that requirement.
Councilmember Larson?
I was going to echo what you both said. I think you both have good points, but to Paul's point, we do a good job of it. We always ask people anyway. If it's a requirement, that doesn't help anybody. I've seen it be confusing. I've been here a handful of months, but I've seen people get confused by whether they did, whether they didn't, they have to go back in the hallway. So I think it would be great if it weren't a rule, and you could just show up here and be asked, do you want to speak? Simple.
The one other part is to effectively manage the meeting, to know who's supposed to be speaking when, so that we're not advancing agenda items and all of a sudden, hey, I forgot, I didn't get a chance to speak, and now we're trying to backtrack. That was the biggest gain we had, was that we know who wants to speak and when they want to speak. Councilmember Stevenson?
I just don't think the system's broken. We're functioning pretty good right now. I don't know. I don't have an appetite to change a rule when no one's really ever said I haven't been able to speak. I think we're doing just fine right now.
City manager?
Yeah, I was just going to point out one thing. When we first implemented this technology, the idea was so that the flow of the meeting could go better, and we could get somebody's proper spelling and all that stuff. We didn't get things wrong. But one of the things that we did that I think we've stopped doing, because I think we've become accustomed to it, maybe we got too accustomed to it, is we did have somebody out there helping. So I will talk to staff about making sure we're out there. There was a gentleman at the beginning of the meeting, and he didn't speak. And I saw him hanging around. I said, oh, you plan to speak? And I was going to just walk him through. And I think I've asked staff to do that as a courtesy, and we'll redouble our efforts to make sure that that happens. Because I think, I think anybody up here is more than happy to do it. Every once in a while, somebody doesn't want to do it. But for the most part, people want to do it. But if we can help them along, and then when they come back the next time, they know to do it. We also have the capability, if someone feels strongly about a topic and wants to sign up, they can literally do it from their house. We have the Connect Oshkosh app that they can, they can sit at home and say, I want to sign up for item 10, and they put it in, and they put their name in, and then it's already here, and it's in the mayor's queue. So the mayor knows that even if that person, the idea behind it was, let's say somebody shows up 10 minutes late, and it's like, they didn't have, but they want to know, they want the mayor to know that they want to speak, that gives them the capability. However you choose to go, we'll go with it. But I just wanted to give you that little background, and I think we can redouble our efforts over here.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Just looking through the council rules of order quick, and the only spot that I ever see must is in response to a remote appearance, which is only applicable in exceptional circumstances. Obviously, we all know that, you know, COVID happened, and I think that's when that went through. I have never, in my time here or my time participating in council meetings before I was elected, ever seen somebody denied an opportunity to speak. Like Councilmember Stevenson said, I don't think the system's broken. Reading through this, I don't think there is any changes that need to be made.
I see no one else with their buttons pressed. Moving on to the next agenda item.
Okay. Next up is process for counselors to add items to the agenda. Again, we talked about this briefly at another meeting. And, you know, we've got a new city manager coming next year, and so I don't believe it's a rule right now, how that is. I'm actually kind of confused. I don't even know. I think it was, you had to bring something forward, and then three other council members have to agree with it in order to be on the agenda. I think that's what we're doing, but I could be wrong. I think that's wrong. I think we, as I stated before, we get elected by the citizens. They put their trust into us. I get some of my ideas from citizens, and I'd like to bring those forward. And I think every, all council members should be able to do that. And if a council member wants to put something on the agenda, they certainly don't need my permission. They don't need my opinion. That's what they want to do. And so for me, I think if a council member wants to put something on the agenda, depending on what it is, you know, you contact the city manager, or the city attorney, if there's some legalese or whatever, or the city clerk who deals with the agenda, and it gets put on the agenda. And so I think the fear was, while you might be taking up too much staff time, whatever, tough. That's the way it goes. Again, we get elected. And if someone is doing that, I think other council members will kind of point that out. And if you're running for election or running for reelection, and you've been doing that, you're going to have to explain that to your constituents of why you're doing that. Or if there's things that you're bringing up and you're putting on the agenda, and they're foolish, then we have the public here that can say, you know, what, why are you dealing with this? We have other things to deal with. So in my personal opinion, if someone wants to put something on, a council member doesn't need any other, it doesn't need permission from the staff or any other council member. But whatever it is, whatever we agree, if we all have to agree to put something on or one person, I think we need to come up with a hard and fast rule, so everyone understands what it is.
And that's part of the part that I don't disagree with right there. Within our council rules, there is not a clear line of do X, do Y, you get Z type of a thing. Did some research in advance of this topic. City of Clare actually has a pretty good, a very good handbook for public officials, a very in-depth one, details how to get an item on an agenda. This may be worth reviewing, just at least having something of, we've got flow charts for boards and commissions to get things on their agendas. That in itself may be just fine. The, seven council members have seven different litmus tests as to what constitutes too much work and too much of a request put on city staff. I'm going to be really blunt. We have had council members before who didn't understand that they were overstepping. And council has attempted to correct those behaviors, and it fell on deaf ears time and time and time again. So having a, having something on paper saying, you got to do this, that might be best to help protect council from itself and members from overstepping. And that might be something up for a good discussion. Councilmember Flohm, and then Councilmember Larson?
I just want to piggyback off that really quick. I don't have a problem with having a kind of standard operating procedure written down on paper for all council members to have available to them, especially when you first get elected. I know that, you know, typically speaking, to get an item on the agenda, you need to talk to the city manager before a certain deadline. But I think just for incoming council members to know who come in the future, that it's good to have that on paper. So I don't have an issue with that. Fine with getting that put down. And, you know, if not in the rules per se, just kind of attached as an addendum, knowing that, hey, this isn't necessarily, this isn't a rule that's embedded within the city council rules, but it's, you know, just a standard operating procedure that we have here for members of council to follow.
Councilmember Larson?
Same. It'd be super helpful. I'm waiting for somebody to say, I'm looking for four nodding heads, so that's how we do things. But I mean, that, but that doesn't always work. I had an issue come up at some point in time, and I asked, I think you, the question about it, Matt, where I said, there wasn't direction on this 18 months ago, and you said, they were probably nodding heads. And I said, I looked at the video, I didn't see anybody nodding. And you said, well, they probably panned away. So we need to know what the answer is. I'm not throwing it under the bus. I'm just saying. It'd be great to know what the procedure was, so people knew how to do it going forward.
Okay. Councilmember Bulow?
I'm looking for some history here, and maybe you know this off the top of your head, maybe you don't, but it looks like there was a red line version back from 2020 to have a rules of timing of submissions, and that it had to be requested by at least 4:00 PM on the Tuesday the week prior, and by two council members. And I don't know if that just didn't get adopted. I don't, oh, is that what it?
It was amended to remove the two council members, is my understanding of that time. Everything else is correct. The timing of the sequencing for city staff to get their things in order and to run it through the proper processes and allow staff to provide input if they need to on anything that we're looking for. Yeah, the two-person thing was something that was carved out. If you'd like, I'd be happy to try to put something to paper on this as a future agenda item. I can consult with Councilmember Esslinger on the topic.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yep.
And like I said, there's several cities that have really, really good handbooks in terms of, and a few of you actually talked on it, and I, you know, I should have thought of this probably sooner in my tenure, but the onboarding of council members and just, how do you do things? It probably would be very helpful to help move things along for them in that fashion. So.
So you don't have to call me out for rookie moves anymore?
I don't. Nope. I can, I can remove that from my, from my responses. Anything else on this one? Otherwise, I'd be happy to chat with Councilmember Esslinger on this topic.
That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds good. I'm going to find my paper copy here. Future agenda items and workshops is the next topic. Workshop on undergrounding utilities, October 22, 5:00 PM. That's before council.
Yep. We got a date, so.
We'll have, the before council meeting workshops always concern me a little bit because we tend to run really right up against a 6 o'clock hard dead, you know, stop time. Any information in advance to council so that we have time to digest and ask questions, and then actually have a discussion would be good.
I think that's the idea. Yeah, the idea. Yeah. Part of the reason putting it on is to get some feedback. For example, if somebody says, hey, there's no way I'm going to make 5 o'clock, and they were really passionate about it, we can move it to in, we're in meeting workshop, but it just, it just stretches out the meeting. Whatever works best for you, you folks, it's okay. You'll see that the other one is also a presentation. Somebody, one of the council members asked about GoEDC. Great idea. So we've scheduled Ms. Rathamell for the 22nd, same day. Mr. Robbie and I talked, we think we can get it all done in 45 minutes. But, but if I had a couple of council members say, I really want to talk about this topic, but I can't make it till 6 o'clock, I'd move it, you know, I'd move it back into the agenda. So I purposely give it 5 o'clock, so you can give me your feedback. If you hate the idea, just say it. It's okay. Well, we're going to be here anyway.
Sure. I don't mean to step over you real quick, but thank you for clarifying that. I thought if it was like in the agenda, it was like a done deal. So I like that clarity. So I can actually go back in my calendar and see. I feel passionately about this, so I want to make sure.
So if you, you know, if you take a look at it and say, hey, Mark, I didn't think about it last night, but I looked at it, I got X going on, I can't make it. Well, then we'll work it out. But, you know, our question to each other was, do we think we can do it in 45 minutes? The answer is, fortunately, yes. But if you guys want to do it in the meeting, we're okay with that.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, just to the mayor's point, I think we're all really good at doing our homework up here. So if you want to provide the presentation in advance, and we start with the last slide, that's always a good place to be, so that we can just ask our questions. But I think we do a good job of our homework, and we ask questions in advance.
You mean not reading PowerPoint slides?
I love not, I love not being read to for PowerPoint slides. I do.
There's two of us.
Thank you.
Should we just fast forward?
Four nodding heads there, I think.
How many nodding heads do you have?
Appreciate that. He mentioned a presentation by GoEDC, same meeting, in meeting, just a heads up on that one. Is there any future agenda items from council members before I go on to statements and announcements? I see none. Councilmember announcements and statements. Deputy Mayor?
On Saturday, Northeast Wisconsin Dragon Boat Festival right down at the Leech. I know last year, Councilmember Stevenson was rowing. If you want to give any sort of.
I think my arm still hurts.
Exactly. But I just checked the weather. It looks like it's going to be 74 and sunny, so perfect for going down there and checking out the festival.
Did you say where it's at?
Oh, at the Leech Amphitheater.
There you go.
I'll be rowing.
Coming down to the Leech. Any more announcements or statements from council? If not, city manager, the rest is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's two memos in your agenda packet, one regarding archaeological monitoring at the Omni Park Bear and Fox exhibit. This is the last one. So this is, it only went 4,000 over the 25,000 threshold. That's why I'm reporting it to you. So the total's going to be around 29,000. Much better than Pret Trail, which was a couple hundred thousand. So we're real pleased that that's going on. And we're, just, we're on to a bear. We may have a bear for the bear exhibit. We're looking for two. I'm not asking you to go out hunting or anything. We want them alive, so please don't do that. We think we're on to one from Alaska, so we're happy. And then also one for the transit building garage suppression system contract. So we've got those two things. We do have the status of outstanding issues, but one took a little bit longer. So I asked Ms. Nyfor to put a memo in there regarding the processes about reviewing the municipal code. So Ms. Nyfor put that in, in the agenda packet, and happy to answer any questions about the, about the memo or anything in the, in the outstanding issues.
I see none. With that, I'll take motion to adjourn.
Two more seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.